Welcome, everybody, to our special informal session here. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council. On Thursday, November 21st, 2024, 2:30 p.m., City Council Conference Room 2034, Building 1, 2nd floor, 401 Courthouse Drive. We got a long address here. The purpose of this special session is to allow City Council to receive public briefings as identified in the attached agenda. Okay? Roll call.
All present with the exception of Vice Mayor Wilson and House Member Wood and House Member Taylor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Patrick, we're ready to roll.
So, Mr. Mayor, welcome to Council. The first brief we provide about VBCDC, the council recalls of previous accounts authorized staff to work with VBCDC, which together, perhaps can be the positive transfer land to VBCDC for a potential project for a global housing in Northern Virginia. The next place we have to recap, we wanted to give a couple of overview of why we're here today, and then we can talk about VBCDC's political presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you know, we've been working with the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, or VBCDC, and the National Alliance for Mental Illness, NAMI, for the last couple years at the direction of City Council in order to locate a potential site for their future development. Today, we have Jessica Guglielmo and Ashley Jarvis with us from VBCDC, and they are here to walk you through their project and see what our steps forward could be.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so very much for having us here today. It's my pleasure today to brief you on the VBCDC-NAMI attainable housing project. First, just a quick overview of our organization. Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization operating in the city of Virginia Beach. We are a hybrid organization created in 1985 by the City Council to assist the city in development and preservation of affordable housing. We are an independent nonprofit organization. However, our bylaws and board membership is governed by this body, and as such, VBCDC is considered a financial entity included with the city. We're governed by an 11-member voluntary Board of Directors appointed by council, and our current liaisons are Councilmember Berlucci and Councilmember Remick. Our project team consists of two nonprofit organizations, Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI Coastal Virginia, as well as resident stakeholders who live with a mental health condition. The project was first conceptualized over three years ago when NAMI approached VBCDC about the idea of redeveloping the former beach healthcare clinic site into affordable housing along with an office-based component. When this site did not work out, VBCDC and NAMI reconceptualized the project into what is presented here today. And for over 35 years, VBCDC has partnered with the city to revitalize neighborhoods and develop quality attainable housing. NAMI's mission is to advocate at the local, state, and national levels to eradicate stigma, and they are committed to improving the lives of those living with a mental health condition as well as their families by providing free support groups, classes, educational programs, and community outreach. Sorry about that. The proposed site for the project is city-owned land located at the corner of Princess Anne Road and Community College Place in District 10. The project is currently zoned B2 and will require a rezoning. The project proposes up to 60 apartments with a 15% set aside of apartments as permanent housing for households living with a mental health diagnosis. The project will also incorporate office space for NAMI as well as onsite office spaces for VBCDC's property management and services. The project will include a mix of 1-, 2-, and 3-bedroom apartments serving households up to 80% of area median income. The project will be built to high-quality construction and green building standards. The site is well-located for resident amenities, including being located to within a quarter-mile to public transit, located near medical, grocery, retail facilities, and close to education and employment opportunities. The project proposes to serve people up to 80% of the area median income, and often households up to 80% of area median income are our community's workforce. They are our hotel workers, our retail workers, bank clerks, nursing aides, administrative personnel, first responders, food service workers, customer service assistants, and paraprofessionals. And we know from the recent housing studies, such as the 2024 Virginia Beach Housing Study commissioned by the city, that attainable rental housing is critically needed to retain our workforce and to reduce the number of households who are severely cost-burdened. The report released earlier this year cited 59,000 households as being cost-burdened, paying well over 30% of their income towards housing. And, let's see here, sorry about that. And the report released last year cited that eight professions, that eight of the top professions in our city, 10 of those professions can't afford, I really messed this up, sorry about that. Eight professions that were extremely cost-burdened and couldn't afford to live in our city are included in those that were intending to serve by this development, and they're listed The project anticipates a three-year development cycle moving forward to include continued community engagement, project feasibility and assessments, rezoning, funding applications. And pictured on this slide are some of VBCDC's current housing projects. VBCDC currently owns over 500 units scattered throughout the city of Virginia Beach in many different neighborhoods, and all of our properties are operated in a manner to contribute to the surrounding neighborhoods. After the former beach healthcare site did not work out for this project, VBCDC and NAMI worked to identify possible alternative sites. We looked at five different sites that were evaluated throughout the city, both publicly-owned sites and privately-owned sites. And in June of 2023, City Council directed city staff to work with VBCDC on exploring this proposed site for an affordable housing development. And this site was the best fit. It checked most of the boxes for this project, including the land is developable and had the appropriate acreage, it's located within a quarter-mile of public transit, located close to medical, retail, grocery, and employment opportunities. It also provides excellent frontage for NAMI Coastal Virginia's office and convenient access for citizens to access their free programs and services. It's not in a high-noise zone or a crash zone, and initial feasibility indicates that it's compatible for rezoning. Now, VBCDC approached this project with a public engagement strategy that differed from how we approached our past projects. Through the informative and planning strategy model, we seek to keep stakeholders informed using transparency, and also seek to incorporate stakeholder input in the project design and concept planning to the greatest extents possible. We identified stakeholders for this project to include persons with lived experience, neighbors, neighboring businesses, and the community at large. And by informing, collaborating, and consulting with our stakeholders, our team is able to acknowledge not only the concerns but also aspirations from the community in order to formulate solutions to the greatest extent possible when creating the project design. Our conceptual site layout is an example of how the community input helped us to shape that design by incorporating design elements identified by stakeholders that were important for success. And some of these elements included building placement, building height, building design, perimeter fencing, and perimeter landscaping. Our public engagement process began in August 2023 with a resident stakeholder group. Then in October 2023, Councilmember Rouse invited VBCDC to meet with the neighboring condominium association owners to introduce the project for the first time. Then in May of 2024, six months later, VBCDC hosted a design charrette, and the purpose of that design charrette was to obtain feedback from interested stakeholders into design elements that were important to them. At that time, we also reviewed the concerns and comments raised at the first meeting from October. Then earlier this month, a community input meeting was held at VBCDC's office to provide a project overview, a project recap, as well as project progress, next steps, and to present the conceptual site layout. VBCDC will continue to engage with stakeholders from all groups throughout the rezoning and design process. So this here slide represents the input that we received from the October 2023 meeting. Staff identified and compiled this above list of areas of concern from the adjacent homeowners. Feedback on these elements were provided and were reviewed at the next stakeholder input meeting, which was the design charrette held in May. At the May design charrette, VBCDC hosted our architects and stakeholders to gather feedback on building styles and site elements that were most important to the community and stakeholders. The architectural styles on the left were those that received the most favorable results. And then additional site elements that were important and were identified as key included light airy brick tones, balconies and porches, green space and landscaping, fences, dumpster screening, and landscape screening along the property borders. And here is the concept design that we presented earlier this month that incorporated to the greatest extent possible feedback from those initial meetings. After the design charrette, we took the community's feedback, worked with our engineering and architecture firm to identify a site layout that best accommodated the needs of the project as well as incorporating that stakeholder feedback. The concept layout was presented to stakeholders at the meeting earlier this month. It includes 60 apartments with adequate parking, perimeter fencing, landscape screening, and buildings not exceeding three stories in height. And this layout proposes a mix of building types to help match the surrounding neighborhoods. So in summary, in 2021, our team began to work to identify a suitable site for the development. In 2022, four sites were evaluated, all of which were not feasible. In 2023, the proposed site was identified, and this body supported the exploration of the site for affordable housing development. Also in 2023, a preliminary fit test was conducted to ensure that the 60 apartments could fit on the site. We also conducted the first community meeting in October of 2023. In 2024, we secured pre-development funding for this project and this site. We held a design charrette in May of 2024, and we presented the site layout to stakeholders in November of 2024. And so our next steps include finalizing the site option agreement if approved by this body, producing project renderings, completing feasibility assessments such as an environmental study, applying for rezoning and site plan approval, and obtaining project financing and continuing community engagement throughout the entire process. Whoopsie. Thank you very much for your time today. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions at this point? Amelia?
Thank you for this. This is really good, very interested in it, and will support it. I just have one little question. When did you and NAMI work together? When did you all start? Because remember, I used to be on VBCDC.
Yes.
NAMI wasn't included at that point. So when did you all start working together to make this happen?
In about 2021, so three years ago. Yeah.
That's outstanding. Anyone else at this point? Worth, and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Guglielmo, for the presentation.
Just a comment, just to congratulate you on the work here. I know it's, this project and this topic is important to all citizens, affordable housing. And so in the city, as we move forward with the comprehensive plan that we, as elected body, you have to make difficult choices at times on locations. So I think you've done a great job on the preliminary vetting of this, and you still have a ways to go, especially I see you've got preliminary approval for financing, which is going to be important to pay for, of course. But yeah, I just want to thank you for the effort, and can't emphasize enough how important it is to work with the council member and the residents there, Buckner Woods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, y'all, for the updating, for the presentation. Good to see you again. I'm glad to see, I was gonna try to remember all the comments, but you have it here, so you've already, you're well-prepared for this. So I think with each of us, if there's a development in our districts, it's the balance of neighborhood preservation and development towards the needs that our community has. We know affordable housing is one of those needs. And I remember at the October meeting, as I'm sure you all have heard each time you've tried to identify a site is, well, why this site as opposed to something else? So can you reiterate that based on your work looking for multiple locations, why you've identified that this site is an ideal location for this project?
Sure. Number one, it's location, location, location. It had the frontage. This is the site that had really the best frontage for NAMI. It is also close to a bus stop, close to education opportunities, close to medical. It checked absolutely all of the boxes. It is not located in an area where there is currently a lot of affordable housing. That's a plus for us on the financing side. We get extra points for that. The price, of course, is not cost-prohibitive to us. We looked at some sites in the private market that were just infeasible due to the cost itself. The acreage was appropriate. Like I said, it checked absolutely all the boxes.
Thank you for that. And speaking on behalf of the community, some of the comments I've heard, I'll say the Buckner Woods, it's relatively small condo association, and so the neighbors have been following along, and they, they're a wonderful group of people. And some of their concerns are, it's a small community and a close community. So there's been a lot of change over by that area. Pan Express is open, and driving past, there's cars already just lining up. So Home 2 Suites has just opened, and something I remember from the October meeting and that I've heard from residents is, you know, Buckner Woods, it's called Buckner Woods for a reason. And, you know, they were enjoying the open space and the trees and the greenery, and now there's what seems to feel like development, development, development very quickly. And so, you know, I know that there's a range of responses from the residents, and I think a general consensus is wanting to remain in the loop and wanting to be involved. But if this is a project that's going to go, that's going to go forward, they really very much want to be a part of the decision-making, know what's happening, and not be surprised by everything or anything that's taking place. So I thank you for your efforts, and like my council colleague would encourage continued efforts for outreach. So thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for your presentation. I remember first having a conversation to kind of initiate this process and partnership between the city, VBCDC, and NAMI, and kind of getting the head nod around to move forward to identify a site and work in partnership. And we were in the other city hall, and we were well into the other city hall. So to come to this day where we're making another forward step into this, leaning into this partnership is so exciting to me, and it's exciting to me because I recognize that this meets a number of the most emergent community needs that Virginia Beach is experiencing. I think you did a really outstanding job of explaining where we came from and what the next steps are. I particularly appreciate Slide 10, which kind of enumerates the dates and material of community engagement that has occurred to date. I definitely acknowledge and support Councilmember Rouse's request to continue to keep the surrounding neighborhoods and the community at large in the loop on this project as we address neighborhood concerns but also make proactive steps to meet the needs of our city as a whole. One aspect of this project, and I know we've explored this before, so those of us who are normalized to talking about this project, because we have been for five years, maybe, we may be very familiar with it, but if you're just tuning in for the first time, I think it's important to really explore the presence of NAMI in this partnership. And I wonder if you could explain in a little greater detail, in addition to the permanent support of housing that we know is identified by NAMI as the number-one community need in the area of mental health. There are so many needs, but that's one of, if not the top need. Could you explain a little bit more about what types of services would be available, how those services are on expansion or at least enhanced accessibility that would result from this project?
Sure. NAMI Coastal Virginia intends to locate their main office in our city in this particular development. And so they offer free classes, workshops, support groups, and information to persons living with a mental health condition and their families. So that will be accessible, it's free and open to the public. And then on the building side, there will be a resident services coordinator employed by VBCDC who will work with and assist clients who live in the building with any type of referral or case management needs that might arise during their residency.
And just to address and get in front of, NAMI provides services to individuals who experience mental illness but also to their family, friends. It's peer-led, family services, and I think that's important to note because we want to try to, I want to attempt to alleviate any concerns that anyone in the surrounding community might have about, you know, what occurs in these offices. Right now, the NAMI offices are located in one of the Pembroke Towers, not on the street level, and this project represents an unbelievable expansion of accessibility to mental health services, which not only will directly impact families by having greater access to those services, but also, I think, will help to address one of the most important aspects of mental health, which is reducing the stigma associated with both accessing mental health services and also for those who experience mental health challenges. It's a very exciting aspect of the partnership. It's not just about housing, it's about family services that we need and rely upon.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I just wanted to thank you very much. Let me just close in saying, last week, Patrick and I welcomed the Virginia Governor's Housing Conference at the Oceanfront, at the Convention Center. There were 1,400 people came from throughout, you know, the Commonwealth. Number one thing, that housing is a crisis, not only in Virginia Beach, not only in the Commonwealth, but nationally. And we're gonna have to have the courage and conviction, you know, to go forward and, you know, to address this in a bold way. But the way that you've done it, you know, with the community engagement and things of that nature, and education, you know, I think is paramount importance to get to buy-in. I remember a number of years ago, when we were talking about building the facility, you know, the Lawson Apartments on Mediterranean, where you have physical disability and mental disabilities. There was pushback from the community, but right now, it is just a fully, you know, well-accepted, you know, situation. And a couple of years ago, before Dr. Ross Hemmings came on, you know, the council, we weren't, we had the, you know, the, we ran a focus group as part of our little organization. We did the idea commission, and the focus group identified mental health as the number-one problem in Virginia Beach. And I think it's nice that, you know, we are addressing it and, you know, and doing, you know, a pretty darn good job about it. But I thank you for all the background that you did. It was a lot of time and effort, and thank you, Jennifer, for your interaction, you know, with this, and, you know, and this bodes well for Virginia Beach. Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, so last time we discussed this with council, we indicated that an option agreement needs to be approved by the city council. So next steps with that, unless council says otherwise, would be December 3rd will be a public hearing, and then December 10th would be a vote on the option agreement to transfer the land over to VBCDC so they can start the entitlement process and also apply for the necessary financing. So unless council says otherwise, that's the intent for the city attorney's office and our staff.
Anybody got problems with that? Let's do it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be a preview of the Central Beach Small Area Plan. This will be provided by initial introduction by Emily Archer, and also what our consultant, who I think is participating virtually via WebEx. As council recalls, we received a proposal in response to RFI, and then following discussion and deliberation by the council, council authorized us to do three things. One was to do a small area master plan for the area, to get a sense of what kind of land uses would be best to put in that area, and also to do a financial feasibility study. We're gonna give the small area plan update now, and then followed by that, we'll give an overview of the feasibility study for the specific project, and then seek council guidance on any next steps after that second presentation. The next one you'll hear will be Emily Archer, who'll give you a quick overview of the project.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, members of council, Patrick and City Manager and City Attorney. Emily Archer, Deputy Director, Economic Development. As Patrick said, in January 2024, council adopted a resolution in response to influx of development interest in the Central Beach Resort Strategic Growth Area. We are very pleased to present to you today the progress on that plan. We're about 60% of the way through it. Our consultants that have been working on it, we have Jerry West with Dills Architects, and virtually Joe Strayer with Renaissance Planning. Joe, are you there?
I am.
Great. With that, Joe's gonna walk you through it, let you know where we are, and happy to answer any questions afterwards. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Joe Strayer.
Joe, are you there?
Did you sound like you're Joe?
I don't know.
Joe didn't give her a far.
I know. Well, we can continue to go. Joe, if you are able to join us, we will go from there. Jerry, I'll let you kind of walk it through from here.
We're in doubt, that would be.
Joe?
Joe, can you hear us?
Did they tell you once earlier?
We can't hear you.
She probably did.
Okay, thank you. So, project overview, we started out with an existing documentation review of all the parts and pieces that have come before this, different studies, different, we did engagement takeaways, and key stakeholder engagement, community open houses, and we have future sessions that we will bring the conceptual alternatives to you. At this point in time, there are two conceptual alternatives, and we, our hope is that out of these two concepts, we can take the best and most liked parts of it and come up and come up with one plan that will solve many of the issues.
Can you all hear me?
Yes. Go for it.
Great. Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, switch a few things around. Thank you for giving us the agenda here. We're just going to do a high-level overview for the first couple of slides of what, what we're looking at, what we've done, what we've heard, uh, and then go into the two concept plans that we developed on a high level. Give you kind of a high-level overview and, and some key points and how they're satisfying what we're hearing. So, uh, as you may know, the study area is, uh, within the orange boundary here encompassing the convention center and the sports center. Bird Neck Road on the, uh, west side, uh, Mediterranean Avenue on the east side. North side would be the Virginia Mocha, uh, site as well as Interstate 264. And then the south side would be, uh, Central, uh, Central Beach, uh, 17th Street, uh, or Virginia Beach Boulevard on the, on the south side. So, next slide please. Broken into three tasks. Task one was kind of the existing conditions analysis, kind of understanding where you guys are right now, what you've already done, uh, looking at existing documents over the past 20 years, uh, looking at the site itself and then engaging in, uh, stakeholder engagement, whether it's community or key stakeholders, uh, it was broken up into three buckets. Task two is conceptual alternatives. I'll down in and provided two concepts, concepts for, uh, your review. And task three will be kind of the coalescing of all of the feedback, feedback that we hear, uh, this weekend. So, next slide. Schedule and timeline. Remember, we're hoping to be complete, uh, at, at beginning of February, um, end of January. Next slide. So, task one, plans and documents review, the, the, the fawn is a little off here, but, um, it was generally broken into three different efforts, whether it's a City of Virginia Beach effort, a neighborhood plan effort, or private development effort. Uh, the two that we mainly focused on here were the Race App, uh, the, the newest version, and then the Resort Area Mobility Plan, the ramp. But, you know, we reviewed 20 documents probably over the past 20 years. So you, you've done a lot of studies, a lot of effort has gone into these studies. And, uh, now we're just trying to extract what this direction is, uh, moving forward. Next slide. Task one, stakeholder engagement, it was broken into four different buckets. One was reviewing all of the engagement that happened, uh, in those, in those studies that you've already done, whether it was a, a City of Virginia Beach effort or, um, a private development or neighborhood development. Step two, we went into public open houses. So we had those in June. Uh, there were two of them. Uh, one was at the convention center, one was at the Atlantic Boardroom. And you'll see some of the slides that we did, um, uh, for that later. Key stakeholder interviews, so we broke it...
Joe, we've lost you again.
Yeah? Oh, no. Can you hear me again?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just speak up really loud. Uh, City of Virginia Beach Departments. So, uh, all in all, it was probably about, it was 14 meetings. We probably had, I don't know, 50 or 60 people we, we, uh, spoke to in a targeted kind of effort. And we were hearing the same sort of things, but we'll get back into that a little bit later. And then the next step is, uh, concept design feedback, which is this weekend at the convention center from one to, or one to three. Next slide. These are the key takeaways from all of your engagement over the past 20 years and the engagement that we're doing right now. It does not really differ from what we're hearing right now from 20 years ago. We're hearing the mixed use, uh, mixed housing opportunities, affordable housing, which you've already heard about today. Reliable and efficient transportation, so bus as well as, uh, bicycling. Safe and accessible public realm. People need to get around, walk around and have connectivity to walk around, to, to have some sort of urban integration. Creating a sense of arrival and gateway enhancements through I-264 as well as the 17th Street Corridor. Partnering the sports and, uh, convention tourism that you already have today and have invested, uh, a lot of effort into today. Creating parking solutions and, and wayfinding strategies to make sure that it's highly noticeable and people can get in and get out of their car immediately and walk around the site. Diverse retail and tourism. You know, this area does have Atlantic Avenue, but it should be representative of the community as well. Establish a Main Street experience, someplace where people can go to walk around, spend their money and, uh, and, and have a community environment. Sustainable development and resilience, uh, creating a community-oriented destination with a unique identity to that community. Embrace healthy competition. Open space network and place making, so having a more robust, uh, open space network. Next slide. So this was the public open house. There were two of them. The bottom images on the left were at the convention center and the bottom on the right were from, uh, the boardroom. Uh, we had about 100 people show up. Uh, we, if you go to the next slide. They were broken up into two different kind of activities. One was more of a general information, uh, board. It showed you information for anybody that came who had no information about the Race App or any of the new efforts that have been going on. This was kind of a boilerplate fact sheet about it. Exactly what it's done, what it intends to do, key takeaways from it. And, uh, that was done for the Race App ramp and the form-based code that you already have in the Ocean Resort area. The second was an activity to, to get engagement out of, out of them, uh, their, their, their feelings and what their vision of this area should be. So it was broken up into three different categories. What do you envision for Virginia Beach? This is a dot exercise where they could put a dot, whether they wanted it to be a community-oriented destination, a tourist-oriented destination or a blend of everything. The next was a preferred investment bucket. They were given three. Yeah, there you go. Perfect. So this is what ended up happening. It was more or less, uh, kind of a, a middle ground, creating a place that was a... Is it, you know, that is always going to happen. Next slide. Is dollars essentially? So they were to put their post-it note on where they would like public dollars spent, whether that's in market rate housing, creating transit or clear, clear gateways into Virginia Beach. We ended up with the most stickies and they had to tell us why. So, uh, we went in most stickies and open space network, bike lanes and parking. Next. And the, the colors mean something here. Uh, not necessarily on this slide, but we wanted to know who we were getting the information from, business owners or residents. So anything that was blue, business owners, green, residents. So the last game or the last...
Joe, can you speak up? Okay. Um, so our second task was conceptual alternatives. We did diagramming. Joe, speak up if you have the opportunity.
Yeah.
Good.
I can certainly speak up. Great. Concept alternatives. So, uh, this was kind of the iteration that we did, the design iterative phase of this. So we did some diagramming, showed you four different, five different options. We got feedback from that. We consolidated to the two plans you'll see in a second. Got feedback from that, developed it further until what you'll see in, in a second here. We're going to take those to the next engagement slide, which is, uh... A place that community wants to visit for no reason. So very community oriented, where people can come and interact and they want to come and interact. So these were some of the guiding principles and a lot of them were based off of the vision and the key takeaways that we're hearing back from, uh, the, from the key, from the engagement sessions. A variety of schemes explored, surface parking into shared garages, maintaining and extending the existing street framework, the street grid, expanding open space and connectivity, creating a 17th Street Main Street and, uh, retaining convention and sports tourism was a necessity. Uh, creating hotels, commercial, residential, all around it, so to support it. Next slide. These are the two schemes that we came up with, a central green and the north-south connections. And we'll go into detail about these, uh, a little bit later. But the big, the big key idea here for the central green is a central green, right outside of the convention. North-south connections is more about creating alleyways or pedestrian experiences between the, between the blocks. So people could walk in between the blocks and on the blocks of the streets to create that connectivity north-south that people need. Next. So master plan for the central green. A lot of different colors here. There's a legend there. The big idea here again is a central green, uh, that adds value, adds, uh, economic value, adds, uh, health, adds social aspects, adds, uh, climate storage retention, uh, abilities. So, um, that's in the, in the center. Everything else in red is a mixed-use ground floor retail. Retail, uh, is a specific, a standalone building is in blue. Civic uses are in purple or pink. Hotels are in orange, structured parking garages are anything that you see in, uh, kind of that gray inside of a building or standalone. Multi-family apartments, so that would be anything very similar to what you see in the Capstone Project. Missing middle housing, this would be more or less like a 12-unit, all the way down to a four, five-unit building, uh, that, that can be specifically designed to meet, um, uh, market rate housing as well as affordable housing, deeply discounted that you're missing, as noted in the housing study. Single-family housing and then open space again. So, next slide. So working around clockwise from the north, commercial core. This is something that's extremely high-dense, so it gives you a sense of arrival right when you come into the district. The community open space, very similar, this is in Dallas, Texas, is a cap, uh, over their highway, but it's very similar. Gives a place for people to come, people to, to go to like a movie, a community movie or something like that. Mixed, uh, use Main Street, so this is something that's three or four-story, very community-oriented.
Joe, can you hear us?
Joe, can you speak up?
We're extending it all the way down to Norfolk Avenue.
Hey, Joe, can you hear us?
I can.
Hey, try turning off your camera. Maybe that'll give you extra bandwidth for your, um, internet.
Sure. How about that?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so the multi-family community on the, on the east, the west side, uh, near SeaTac. So a little bit higher density, building around, uh, a, a, a central core that could be somewhat similar to a Capstone Project. A multi-use sports tourism complex. So this is, uh, your action sports. This is your convention center. This is your ice hockey. Everything that you kind of see in, um, in your sports study is kind of in this location. Next. Looking at some of the diagramming that, uh, has gone into it. So again, the bubble diagram, the vision diagram, a central green space that kind of radiates all of the future development. Parking circulation, uh, it's detailed here that pink is a potential resident parking act. It is not intended that this will be specifically for residents or visitors, but it would be a shared garage, a blend. Looking at your street framework, how you're going to push the new streets through the development as well as open space connectivity, how people meander through the site, uh, using open space as the connect... For the, for the, the development. So, next slide. Phasing strategy, we broke it up into manageable chunks. The expectation is you're not going to build this all in, in one year, right? Or even five years. This is a vision for multiple 40-plus years. So how might you develop that? What is the most important part? What are the most pieces, uh, most important pieces to fall first? So phase one, near term is in one, the dark blue. Phase two is in the, the short term or the, the near term as well, uh, in, in teal. Phase three in green, phase four in, in orange. Next slide. So existing conditions, this is where we'll go through and exactly tell you what's in this plan. Go ahead. Next slide. So phase one, go ahead, click it again. Phase... First phase of the central green. That includes an indoor market, something similar to what you would see at Eastern Market in DC. So this is a place where people can come in and kind of get, get food, get, uh, local goods, that sort of stuff. Headquarter Hotel, that would be on the south, uh, southeast corner of the, um, convention center intersection. Mixed-use buildings, shared parking garages. This is intended to be shared with the hotel. Number four is a mixed-use convention center building. This is a shared parking facility, hotel or office, uh, could be planned here. It's an ice rink on top and a residential building, uh, surrounding it on, on the top side. Original stormwater strategy, we talked about pulling it all the way down. Uh, six, the facilities department, uh, this is a rebuilt, a reimagined site plan, keeping them in the location that they are, uh, based off of their, uh, study that they had just, or are currently completing. Go ahead. Next slide. Phase two would be predominantly the, the Chaplain property to the south. Go ahead, click it again. So as you're seeing this, uh, you're seeing some of your public facilities disappear. So this is number one, uh, we're suggesting that the library move up into the existing Mocha building. There might be some renovation as well as a visitor's center. So this is kind of your community core in that location. The public safety buildings, that is your emergency response, your fire and your...
What he was getting ready to say is that the public safety buildings are number two on the plan. Joe, was that you?
Central, yes, central green, phase two is...
Joe, you, you, um, you went out. Go back to, start with number two. You were talking about public safety building.
Okay. All of your public safety buildings, all of your existing uses that are along 17th Street right now are consolidated into one building, uh, where they'll operate out of. This is a, generally a, a, a scheme that most, most cities do as well. So that would be along, uh, 17th Street and, uh, Cypress Avenue. Central Green Phase Two is now built. Uh, that includes a headquarter hotel and some standalone retail spaces. Uh, four is the mixed-use Main Street. So this is a three or four-story, kind of a fire-grained building out. And then a, a residential community to the south with a residential, uh, community green. Next slide. Okay.
Joe, so phase, phase, uh, three, uh, in number one is the action sports facility that would be added.
Yeah, could you click again?
Yes. Sorry.
There you go. Action sports facility. This is, uh, built right next to your sports center. It is intended to be a multi-story building that will provide a, um, a community aspect as well as a, a training facility. Two would be an extended stay for a Doubletree that they're already planning. Central garages, uh, to, to help out on the parking front. Number four is, that's when you start to get your commercial core in between 22nd and 21st. A transfer center, it's something that you have right now that's on the east side of the, uh, convention center. This is a little bit more robust and it's right along 17th Street. So it's easy to get to for all vehicles, all people, all, all transit. And then extending the, the expansion of the, uh, Main Street. Next slide. Click it again. There you go. This would be, uh, a Mount Olive expansion that they're already planning. Two would be the multi-residential, multi-family residential with shared garages. And those are intended to be somewhat similar to, anything you kind of see in this brown color would be somewhat similar to the Capstone Project. Marquee office building, so that gives you the...
Sorry. Yeah. So, um, number three is the marquee office building, um, that is, um, needed in this area. And then number four would be grocery store office, shared garage.
Next slide. Next slide. So, in takeaways, I won't read through all of these, but these are the certain elements that you should think about when you're, when you're looking at this plan.
Joe, hold on a second, Joe. Go back, go back to slide 26, the master plan. You were here.
Yep.
Can you go over this slide? You, you went out again, Joe.
This is just a culmination of everything, just showing you the site plan again. There's nothing special about this one. This one is the same as 16 or something like that. Next slide. Some key design elements of that, that, that scheme, I won't read through them all, but it's very similar. You can go ahead and read through these on your own. But the, the thing that you should take away from this, it's about 300 acres, it's 17 million total square feet. You're bringing in about 19,000 new residents, 10,000 new residential units, 9,000 new jobs, 900 hotel keys, providing up to 16,000 parking spaces, that structured garage, surface and on streets, and then adding 45 acres of open space. And that is between the large Central Green as well as all the connective tissue that goes in between those sites. Next. Okay, so this is the ma- master plan for the north-south connections. The colors are the same, the, the idea is a little bit different. Next slide. So, this is intended, again, I'll go from pedestrian mall and go all the way around. So, the pedestrian malls are intended to be somewhat similar to the Charlottesville downtown experience, where they're cutting mid-block, but you have double-faced facades, one on the, the street side and one on the internal side. So, you're doubling how much retail and off.
So, the, I'm sorry, I can't read that one over there. Come around here. So, as he described the other scheme, this is the, this is the second scheme, he didn't mention that, but the, you can see the vibe creative district, the high-density community, mixed-use Main Street, lower-density community, commercial core, and civic and sports districts. Here's that same diagram for the scheme, where it all comes out from the center.
Yes.
Yes.
So, this, this core, this core is, is largely based around the convention and sports complex, so it's a little bit more close-knit. The important thing to hear to notice is the street framework, we're extending.
Joe, can you hear us? Joe, can you hear us?
The street, the street grid is more of a regular grid as opposed to the first scheme that kept the, the angle of the property to the south. And this creates more connectivity north and south.
Next slide.
Joe, Joe, we're just going to have the person here take it from here. Okay?
So, this is the same phasing diagram as the other one, the dark blue is Phase One, Phase Two in the light blue, Phase Three in the green, and Phase Four, again, spread out among a couple of years. This is existing conditions. And then the phasing of mixed-use, retail, civic, hotel, structured parking garages, regional stormwater, and the headquarters hotel, mixed-use buildings with shared parking garages, that would be for residential, for visitors, and for convention use. And next phase would be commercial business district, mixed-use and shared parking garages, the new library, public safety building, 17th Street, Main Street would begin to become developed and a residential community of single-family attached duplexes and apartment houses. Then Phase Three would create a central parking facility, expansion of the Convention Center with a headquarters hotel, the Doubletree extended stay has plans to expand as well. And then. And pocket neighborhood commercial. Phase Four, Headquarters Hotel, Commercial Business, the Art Museum, Residential Multifamily and Shared Garage, the Tidewater Veterans Memorial Park, which is on the same site. It may shift a little bit in terms of the, the green space, but not the monument itself. The Convention Center Green, the action sports facility would be developed, and Mount Olive Church expansion, and more, sent Commercial Business Core, Restaurant, Ground Floor Retail and Shared Garages. Conceptually, get over here, so the total square feet and 8,000 residential units, 14,000 plus new residents, 8,000 new jobs, 1,200 hotel keys. Civic uses would include action sports, library, public safety, Mount Olive Museum, convention and ice rink, and then parking provided would be between all of structured garage, surface and streets would be approximately 17,000 spaces with 25 plus or minus acres of open space. So, a little bit different from the first scheme, but still getting the housing that was the piece of this that has the most interest. Next steps are, there'll be a flyer and public, more public outreach. Oops, guess that's it. Joe, are you still there? Joe?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, questions from anyone?
Any questions at this point? Jennifer. Yeah, I think that would be good. And I'll tell you what, maybe it's also best to, you know, to hear the next Capstone one, too, and then we can put things into a broad context work.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I could so speak on the cadence here or the structure, we wanted everyone to see this. It's not me, you all set the agenda, but it's important to see this before we see the next presentation. It's not necessarily on the Capstone proposal, but the feasibility of part of this plan. And so, I think today, I mean, my first takeaways is, this is to whet our appetite. Obviously, we, next time, you know, we have better setup in terms of the presentation than, than Joe here. But this is a lot to take in here, I heard the word, or the term 40 years, and so, and my, and this is District Six, but I'm, and this is a really important part of this city. It touches the resort, it touches tourism, touches where people can live, work and play, touches the vibe, and almost half of it is, or a third of it, is open space. And so, the value of having a land use planner like this really helps steer us and whet our appetite as to what can go where over a long period of time, not, not over one year or five years, but he said 40, and it may, I'm not sure about some of these ideas, but it's a guide and it's, you know, we want our children to move back here, this is, could be a part of that, we want more, promote tourism, sports tourism, to invite the public to enjoy the resort, to incorporate the vibe, and that cultural arts district is also has arts as well. So, I think it's exciting and it's meant to, from what I can tell, to whet our appetite and to get the juices going and discussion on what can go where and when.
And I think the important part is that, you know, sometimes, yeah, we do take our time to make these decisions, but this is a project of magnitude and, you know, one of the most important parts of the city. And listen, you know, once again, I think, you know, when we had the recent tourism, you know, recognition, and it brought out that, you know, the, the oceanfront did generate $3.8 billion in economic throughout the whole city. And the other thing that, this is a multifaceted thing where it's not only for tourists, but it's also a destination for the people of Virginia Beach and the people in the 757. And when you think about the synergy of already having the sports center, having a convention center, the vibe district, Atlantic Park, and a revitalized Rudy Loop, but, but once again, as we look to the future, and one of the things we're talking about is creating those extra revenue sources that we're going to need to pay the bills for the infrastructure for the future going forward. You know, this is a grand, bold design, but it'd be done in phases over time. But, but once again, just that, you know, you know, kind of a revitalization of a very, I think, underperforming area at this point. And I think it's a decision point that, you know, we, you know, how we go forward is going to be critical. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, the next step on this one is some community engagement, and it will come back to you all for a presentation, apologize for the technological issues. It wasn't on our side, it was on the presenter's side, but again, it's, for something of this magnitude, it's not acceptable. We'll get you guys the packet to make sure you have that for your, for your review. So, I think, Mayor, Mr. Rami kind of said it well. What Council wanted out of this was to do a master plan and to see if the types of uses that was presented to us as a response to the RFI was something that was, that was professionally acknowledged as what should be in the area. You've got that, we're going to finish that with some community engagement, and the next step, Council asked for was for a feasibility study on the proposal that we received in response to the RFI. So, we brought on CBRE, and they're going to give Council a high-level overview of the feasibility of the items that was presented in that Capstone proposal.
Thank you. Welcome, Amanda.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, Manager Duhaney, and City Attorney Stiles. As the manager just expressed, the presentation that you previously received was a higher-level land use study, and what you're about to hear is a more narrowly focused economic feasibility study. I'm pleased to introduce you to David Fuller with CBRE to present their work. And as a reminder, this was in accordance with your direction by resolution in January of 2024. David Fuller has 30 years of hotel consulting, underwriting and valuation experience, and has worked on assignment around the world for an array of institutional, local and governmental clients. In mid-2022, David was tapped to lead the National Hotel Property Tax Practice for CBRE Hotels Advisory. As the practice leader, David directs more than 20 property tax professionals strategically situated around the country. At the conclusion of Mr. Fuller's presentation, I will provide a historical overview of what led us to the presentations today and seek your direction on next steps. Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you, Council members, for inviting us in here today. Our study is very narrowly focused as compared to what you just saw. So, our study really is, we're an independent company with the largest real estate company in the world with specialties in most asset classes. Mike Cummings, my associate here, Mike Wright and I mostly focus on hotels, but we looked at this project as a mixed-use potential. We didn't come to it with a specific, you know, there, I, we know there's a proposal by Capstone, but we didn't say, oh, we're going to assume that that is the proposal. We came in here with a blank slate saying, okay, what can be done in this site now? Again, you just saw the, the master plan, we were tasked specifically only with looking at the parcels, the parking lot that kind of faces the Convention Center on 19th Street. So, let's get this going. So, th- this is a much shorter presentation, so just stick around a few minutes, and then you can always ask me questions at the end. I'm going to discuss the proposed hotel, Headquarters Hotel that is, then multifamily and retail, and then wrap it up with the, the structured parking. So, to do this study, we looked at each use individually and then as a whole. So, we looked at where the demand was coming from, where it is now, and what would, could potentially be the demand in the future, meaning there is demand that already exists that may not be accommodated because we don't have a Headquarters Hotel connected, or at least in close proximity to the Convention Center, that a new hotel should capture somewhat of a low-hanging fruit. And then what could it induce, meaning what new demand would come to the area because now there is a Convention Center hotel? We then looked also at the potential of, on this site specifically, how many residential units, and then the retail really is the at-grade retail that would support the residential and the hotel use and the surrounding vibe and the other neighborhoods immediately adjacent to the property. So, the hotel, I understand, see this is kind of small, you may not catch it all, what we put together here was a conceptual plan of what a mix of rooms might look like, what type of meeting space you might, might have, and what type of amenities would go into this hotel. For example, we assumed that there would be an at-grade restaurant facing the Convention Center. We also would like to see a rooftop, a bar slash restaurant to maximize potentially the views towards the water, maybe a small cafe as well. And then we'd have about 18,000 square feet of meeting space to support the Convention Center that's there. The idea is you're building a hotel potentially that would feed off of the Convention Center, but could also do its own small breakout meetings and its own independent meetings if it's, you know, smaller than the Convention Center needs. Any questions on this before I move on? Good. Next, we looked at how many potential residential units could be absorbed in the market, and I could go into, if you have questions of like kind of methodology, but I'm really trying to keep it big picture for now. The, what we look at is obviously population, household growth to determine how many units could be absorbed based on projections forward of, again, population growth, which would stem from employment growth. And then we look at how many would be renters, this is all for rent product, and we estimated about 950 units with, you know, a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedrooms. In this, we then project forward what the rent would be for all these and come up with the cash flow. I should have said that for the hotels as well. Part of this whole exercise is putting together what the potential revenue expenses would be, and then figuring out what that future cash flow and all these uses would be. At the end, we then figure out, well, what's the cost to build this? We look at, well, does this project make sense overall? Meaning, is the rate of return to an investor, not necessarily the city, but a, a market investor, makes sense for them to, to, to do this project? Meaning, if they had other projects that they could do, is the return here, the internal rate of return, worth it to make this a feasible project? So, again, this is the residential side, and then on the retail side, again, we're looking at wrapping the retail essentially around the base of the buildings, which could also have the parking either as a structured deck or behind the buildings. We're not, you know, we're not really focused too much on exactly how that layout's going to look, but the idea would be to have a streetscape that was, as was outlined in the previous presentation. You would create a, a town center concept, which would be open on both sides, you'd kind of create that mid-block here. Ideally, you would have those restaurants and those service-type of retailers at-grade, you would have it open also on the 19th Street side, so when those conventioneers were coming out, they would get to the retail, there would be restaurants and bars that they could flow right into, and you could capture that business. And then the parking, so what we did is we estimated how many spaces are needed based on current zoning and based on typical usage for each use. So, for hotel, we're looking at about 400 spaces. The, the multifamily would be about 1,660, yeah, 1,660 spaces, sorry. And then there'd be 1,500 spaces that would be dedicated just for the Convention Center. Now, assuming that a lot of this demand to the hotel would be conventioneers, some of those convention-goers would also be staying, parking at the hotel, so you kind of have that excess overflow already in the, in the parking deck. We put all the, we put all the forecasts together of the hotel, the multifamily, and the park, the retail and the parking, to come up with a 10-year forecast. the park, the retail, and the parking to come up with a 10-year forecast of income and expenses. We then look at the cost to build each of these, and what we do, as I mentioned earlier, is figure out the internal rate of return. As you see here, we project a total investment cost of just under about $500 million for all this development. That's based on cost surveys. We have a pretty deep database of actual costs of other projects that are similar to this. So, you know, we compare those, and then we look at what the future value of this project is, is, does it exceed, does it not just exceed the cost, but does it provide a satisfactory return to a potential investor that makes the whole project feasible? Again, I said I was going to try to keep it quick, so that's, that's where we are. Questions from you?
Okay, anybody got questions? Worth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Mr. Fuller and Team CBRE. Just a couple of questions on the hotel. The occupancy of the hotel would primarily support the convention center, or how much would that, do you know? Have you done any studies on?
Sure, yeah. So, what we did is we looked at all the demand sources. So, you know, knowing that the convention center currently, the only hotel that's within walking distance is now the Doubletree, which is a little old, they are renovating it now. I just went back through there again to see what they were up to and the ongoing, but it is on the other side of the parking lot. The idea is you want the hotel to have a sufficient number of rooms to support the convention center. Now, we looked at the demand that would be coming from the convention center, from the sports complex, from the beach, and then from general business. So, we didn't just say, okay, this is the only convention site, no one else could stay here, obviously. That's not what a hotel does. Convention center is only going to fill it for a percentage of the time. So, using these, a lot of information from our partners at the CBB, who provided, you know, the booking pace for future conventions, the average capture rate of, of room nights, where those people are going, if they're not staying immediately or at the Doubletree, what other hotels they're going to. We looked at how many potential pieces of business they're not capturing because there was a, there wasn't a hotel right there. Then we also looked at what the sports complex is throwing off in terms of potential room nights. Now, we do assume that most of the businesses come from the convention center, not the sports, because those are generally different types of clients, but it doesn't mean that they're mutually, that they are mutually exclusive, but they will be able to use the facility also. Most of those sports events will be weekends where there are fewer conventions going on, so obviously we'll capture some of that business. But as you saw in the previous presentation, the Doubletree is looking at a small, about 100 to 107 to 115 unit, maybe true, not quite a full extended stay like a residence in, but a, a more limited product. We, we actually incorporate that hotel into our own projection, so we're not missing any potential new supply. So, we do look at that. Then we look at the spillover, obviously, in the summer months. Plenty of demand that is getting priced out at the beach, takes rooms inland, so there's definitely overflow, which will capture, you know, 15, 20-minute walk down to the beach, you know, if you're going to walk it. Yeah, we definitely expect to capture some of that demand as well. And even in the shoulder months, when some weekend occupancy is still hitting over 80%. Generally, if you, we are able to look at, through our partner service called Smith Travel Research, how many room nights are essentially fully sold out in this market. Obviously, the summer weekends, fully sold out. So, if everything is sold out at the beach, we actually look at also inland, further inland properties, whether at Town Center, along 265, 265, whether that they're, you know, how much they're seeing on weekend versus weekday occupancy. So, we look at it multiple facets in terms of where that demand is coming from, not just the convention center.
Worth?
Mayor, two more questions and a comment. So, the 950 apartments, do you forecast how many years that would take to absorb?
Sure. So, we end up at about a 20, I think we end up projecting 22 units a month of absorption. So, you could, it'll take a couple of years. The idea being that you want, as even the previous presentations showed, that you'd have that Headquarters Hotel, you'd probably have that first building of the residential, and then you're rolling it through, you know, making sure that the demand is keeping up with what you're building, and you're not, you know, putting it all out there at once. It can be done all at once if, you know, where, if the projections change in terms of where the population growth is coming, but right now, we're showing it about three years to absorb it all.
Just one last question, then a comment. So, I think a lot of the public and my colleagues here are going to want to know in your pro forma and your forecast of the feasibility, how much is the public, we have, we have to give free land, we have free infrastructure, do we have?
So, the one thing on the cost side that we did assume was the land was not, was at cost or at basically, you know, a land lease to the developer at a, you know, a dollar a year, whatever it might be, so essentially free. So, we did assume that, we didn't assume tax breaks per se.
You did or did not?
We did not. We assume market rate taxes. So, fully loaded, in other words, taxes based on the future value of the property. So, that kind of ramps up. But we did assume on a cost side that the land would be done. We also noted in the report that if the city wants to move forward with the parking garage on its own, the 1,500 spaces, that could be taken out. You know, we valued that separately from the rest.
Just one last comment, which is really a question. You're aware of the Atlantic Park project, which will open next May and June, $335 million mixed-use project. How will this impact that? Will it displace, will it compete? Because in your report, and let me finish the question, because in your report, you do state that the retail will compete with Atlantic Park, and so that's really important project.
But be more of a complementary use where we felt that the retail for this project would be really focused on the residential, that's really not being serviced right now. We felt that the surf park and you're going to have certain retail users specifically for surfing and, and all those like-kind uses, that this, again, is more of a town center for residents and everything else that you currently don't have here presently.
Okay, Barbara, then Chris.
I think Worth just sort of asked my question. Atlantic Park is going to be, I think we've pretty well said, it's going to be a game-changer for the city, and we put a lot of money in that. And, I mean, are you sure these things aren't mutually exclusive? I don't see this tremendous demand coming for all of these things all at one time. I mean, you talk about 40 years, I can kind of see 40 years, but really.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. I see the demand for all this.
You know, yes, we have two competing, quote-unquote, big-large developments, but based on our research, we felt that this town center was really independent of everything else. That was going to serve its own unit as far as nearby residents with the hotel, not competing against oceanfront residents. You know, trying to get some more development this way, pulled off the oceanfront that's family-sized and that kind of thing.
Also, we're looking at about 150,000 square feet of retail, which is not a lot. If you think about a typical shopping center with a grocery store and a CVS and a strip center, that'd be about 120,000. So, you're looking at, mostly, in this case, we're not looking at a shopping center with grocery anchor. You might have a small, like, yes-market. Again, those, we're looking at potential uses that would service the surrounding community, like the vibe area, but also you're looking at another 950 units, which, you know, at 2.5 people per household, you know, that's additional demand, right? You're building in that demand right there. And then the hotel would also be pulling, would also create demand, you know, for additional restaurants and other type of eateries and services. So, you are, you are sort of building your demand into it for the retail. Again, 150,000 is not a lot, but yes, I mean, there could be some overlap in types of uses, but I think, you know, we're looking, we're looking really at a walking community. Yeah, you'll be able to pull in and park fairly easily, as, you know, the previous presentation showed as well. But, you know, the idea is you've got the residences that in the surrounding area, you're building new residences, you're building a new hotel. In fact, if the other small hotel gets built, then you're looking at about 470 keys at, you know, 75% occupancy, say, for the combination. That's a lot of people, that's a lot of heads that are coming into the community that are, you know, they're not, especially if you're looking at a, a hotel that is bringing in people from outside the area, they're going to want to walk around and explore and, you know, go to the local shops. They don't necessarily want to be jumping over to the other side of the highway and go to the, the wave.
Well, I don't want to put all of our existing businesses out of business, and somebody's got to show me this great demand. I, I don't see it.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I have a question. I'll start with what I left off. Mr. Manager, did we do this type of in-depth study prior to the public investing $150 million in Atlantic Park?
It was before my time, Councilmember Taylor, but Council did, the VBDA and the developer did split the costs on several studies, one to include a displacement study, parking study, and I think also retail and apartment study as well. So, I think Council basically replicated what was done to some extent to what was done with the Atlantic Park project, but that was probably 2017, 2016 time, right?
Okay, because in the document that I had requested of the study, it actually had a disclaimer that they didn't look at any retail. So, I just wanted to make that point. If we are really concerned about displacing current businesses and looking at the value and if there's enough people, and one of the words you used was demand, I don't know if there was demand for a surf park with the ocean across the street. And so, with this, I see the, our hypotheses for those that didn't vote for this study was, we had the RASAP 2030 plan, which Capstone used to basically develop the presentation. And so, for some of us, there was no question that it was, you're going to present exactly what you presented here today, which is there's plenty of opportunity. At the surf park, for instance, the public was told there was going to be experiential retail, and that was sold, so there would be less concern about displacing Starbucks. What we know now is there's not any experiential retail there. So, there is an opportunity for displacement. You mentioned in, in the introduction, Amanda, you have 30-plus years working with governments and localities, municipalities?
Yep.
Have you?
Sixty.
Sixty together. And your experience?
I know, I only look like I'm 25.
You do, you look me up. In your experience, have you seen other municipalities go into large projects such as Atlantic Park and Capstone without doing this type of in-depth analysis?
Yeah, let me clarify also back to your question, Councilman. The, the retail is not the main driver of the, why this project is feasible. So, even if that is, that can be scaled back fairly easily. Well, in other words, you're putting retail at grade, you're not building a Wegmans here, right? You're not saying, oh, we're going to go all in and roll the dice, right? So, you're building in retail at, at the surface level of this property that would support the uses that are coming in. But if it ends up being about, you know, 100,000 square feet instead of 150, project is still going to be feasible, in our opinion. So, I mean, we could run the numbers at what-if scenarios. If, you know, if this council wants us to do that, we can, you know, scale back certain parts or add certain parts. The idea is, you know, we felt that this amount of retail, plus or minus, is feasible based on the entire project in the surrounding areas.
Yeah, so I, we see RFPs all the time, different municipalities asking us to do these studies. You know, even certain parts of the country where they would like a hotel, that they don't have a hotel, it's a small town, we will get in there, do demand studies, and kind of try to figure out and mold exactly what is needed and that everybody can afford. You know, everybody says they want a hotel, but when it comes down to what's your price point? What, what do you really, you know, need? And those studies, we do all the time.
Okay. And then lastly, because we did spend the money on this type of study, you all spent some time looking at the RASAP 2030 plan, or no?
Yeah, I mean, so we, we, you know, we incorporate what, you know, if you look at the full body of the report, there's multiple projects that we're, we make sure we're aware of, you know, obviously including the wave and the broader study that you're doing here now. So, if there's more that we need to incorporate, we could obviously do that. But, yeah, we try to take in everything to account that what we know is coming, you know, for example, you know, there's good chance for another hotel right next door, small one, and what could be coming in the, in the long range, sorry.
It's a, it's a proof of concept.
Proof of concept.
Based, based on what the concept was, does it work?
And so, in my personal opinion, I don't think we have the nine votes it would take to really support Capstone.
I'm not, yeah.
You're not there, you're not there.
I'm just a consultant, independent kind of thing, you know.
But based on what you presented, the developer that came to us spent money, invested, he wasn't off in the presentation in terms of what he was saying he could do?
No, no. I mean, it, it was molded pretty well.
Thank you.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation. Also enjoyed the one that preceded it. And this, I mean, what strikes me at least first is this is a lot of information, and I, and I did read your analysis, and I'd love to go back and look at it a little bit more now after, after hearing your presentation. So, so I look forward to doing that. And, I mean, I, I really think that this, this, this is something that we should come back to, because I think that we're probably, I would imagine, we'll, we'll be hearing lots of things about, you know, possibilities of what, what could happen in this area, and that, that I think we just need to contextualize them with the work that was done with the land use study, knowing that, you know, the proposal that came to us was, you know, was sound, at least from a, you know, from, from an investment perspective. And, I mean, really, it's, we can't do everything at once, I think, is, is probably the best way of putting it. And I think we need to maybe just get into some priority setting around land use concepts to kind of fill in that map that we saw in the previous conversation, and, you know, just around use types, like, is a convention center hotel something that is important to us? And if so, where does that go? And how do we get there? Is our sports use is important to us in that area? And how, how we make that work? Is residential something that, that is, that, that belongs there? And then, and how, how does that help the retail, which I'm sure it would? I mean, you put people somewhere, they need things to buy, so, and you've got convention center goers. So, so I, I just, I hope that, I hope that we, we have a chance to kind of percolate on this for a little while, but, but at the same time, come back to it. And I would have loved a little bit more time to have looked at this. I know we just got it a little over, or less than a week ago. I did see the date on here is July, and, and I was just kind of wondering about that because of, you know, if we're, we're sitting here kind of talking about this today, I would have loved to have put in a little bit more time to, to go through the material before.
And I'm local, so I'm happy to come back at any time to discuss this or anything else you need or like.
Yeah, and in terms of dating of the report, I mean, yeah, that was when we were commissioned to do this. Obviously, updates can be considered as well if need be.
Okay, Amelia.
One part, and thank you so much for the presentation, but one part I immediately shared with my colleague, Councilmember Belushi, is that residential piece?
Mm-hmm.
Because we are now looking at attainable and affordable housing?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't think those are going to be that. Am I right?
That, that was not part of our initial scope, but that could be added into the mix. I know that's a very hot topic, because I'm on the board of four kids, so that's always a, a concept of affordable housing and certain set-aside units and stuff like that. So, again, those specific design concepts, we can easily incorporate to see, hey, changing this or setting aside 10% of the, the units for, for low income or, or whatever, workforce housing can be done, and what does that do? Does it project still pencil, or does the developer need to come in with more money or, or something like that? That can be done.
Okay, and the next thing came to do with residential was short-term rental. How many of these new residential are going to be used?
We did not, we did not look at short-term rental, all these were, you know, traditional apartments.
Right. How many are going to be used by those purchasing these for that purpose? Those are things you need to think of as well. Thank you.
Michael?
Well, I think Councilmember Ross Hammond is right in being aware anyway of the, of the use of those residential units, should they exist, because they would be able to be administratively approved in that area. But anyhow.
And that could be rolled into some covenants or something like that with, with, if you do, do a ground lease or something like that, that it cannot go, you know, short-term rentals? I mean, that's a, just a clause in the lease.
They're hot down there.
Oh, I know they're hot. They're hot everywhere. They're hard in the mountains, they're, yeah.
I, I have a question, maybe more for the manager, for Ms. Jarrett, because I want to follow up on what Mr. Schulman noted about the date. I hadn't noticed that until you just pointed it out. So, that, we're sitting here now, November 21st. When was that? When was that document available on July 17th? Was it published on July 17th? And has it been circulated among other groups? And we're just now seeing it less than one week ago?
You got it, Ms.?
Yes, sir, thank you for that question. So it was received late summer, but then required a series of back and forth between the individuals that produced the report, our own city staff, and then other stakeholders. We wanted to make sure that the report wasn't done in a vacuum and that planning staff had the opportunity to offer some review and comment, that the staff at the CBB, who actively works with the convention center and recruitment of those conventions, their loss reports, we wanted to ensure that what we presented to you was comprehensive and complete and incorporated all staff review and comments. And then lastly, as we were moving towards the fall, the two were tracking with similar times, the land use plan that you were just briefed on, as well as this study becoming completely staff-vetted. And so we thought, instead of presenting them to you in an independent vacuum, that it would make more sense to have a comprehensive review. So start with the more broader perspective and summary about the land use itself, and then dive more narrowly focused into a project that you had previously considered. I do have a few slides that we will move to next, once your questions have been answered on this piece of it, that walk us through the history that led us to today, and then gives us an opportunity to seek your direction on next steps and future discussions.
Anybody else at this point?
Just real quick, I just want to make the observation that from the last presentation, a lot, a lot of that land use study had residential living in privately owned land and not publicly owned land. And so a lot of, well, that can be taken, and I won't mention the names of those owners, but that, I just want to make that observation that I'm not necessarily a big fan of having airland go to apartments, but at this point, so anyhow.
Okay. You know, I think at this point, you know, what we were presented with today are a plethora of aspirational possibilities. You know, nothing is written in stone. This is what can be, this is what we can, you know, a potential dream, a potential, you know. When I first met Norm Jenkins back in 2018, yes.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a couple more slides yet.
Okay, I'll give the summary.
And this one, we kind of want to recap what's been presented and to seek some guidance on council on next steps. Because you remember, as part of resolution, Mayor, council also authorized the infrastructure study as well. Council also said, do not do that infrastructure study until you saw the overview of the master plan and then got a feasibility study on the project that was presented to you. Then after you've got overview of the master plan and a feasibility study on the project, for you all to have a conversation with the staff regarding, do we then do that infrastructure study? So that's what we're going to try to get some guidance from the council now with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, so just for a brief background, as you all will recall, the resort area strategic plan was initially adopted in 2008, and then an update was done in June of 2020. As a result of, as a result of those plan updates, the city did issue a request for a letter of interest and qualifications for mixed-use development that was adjacent to the convention center and the sports center, and that was done in May of 2022. There was one response received, and the individual that was the respondent did brief city council in October of 2023. As a result of those discussions, a resolution was adopted in January of 2024 that outlined three requests, as the manager just described. The first was the Central Beach Small Area Plan, which you were just briefed on. The second was the Mixed Use Proposal Feasibility Study, which our partners at CBRE just shared with you. And the third was an Infrastructure Cost Analysis. So here's a page directly from your previous plan that outlines what the public and private development opportunities are. You can see some familiar items on this list, such as the sports center. But number four is the Convention Center Hotel, which was listed a priority. You'll see lower down on the list, you have Rudy Loop and the Dome Site, all things that we are in the process of discussing or implementing at this point in time. So next steps, so regarding the Central Beach Small Area Plan, which you received a summary of earlier today, as was mentioned, there's the opportunity for additional public engagement on Saturday at the Convention Center. So that's Saturday, November 23rd. Then the plan will be briefed to the Planning and Design Review Committee on December 3rd, and then to the Full Resort Area Advisory Committee on December 5th. Then the plan is to take that to the Planning Commission and then ultimately back to city council for your formal adoption, should you wish to move forward with the plan. Then with regards to the other portions of the work that staff has been doing, council could direct staff to pursue one or more of the components of the mixed-use proposal based on CBRE's analysis. As they discussed, it was broken down into four component parts, the hotel, the parking, the retail, and then multifamily. City council may also consider authorizing staff to move forward with the infrastructure analysis. That was the third component of the resolution that was adopted in January of 2024. However, as the manager stated, we were to provide you with this data first before moving forward with that infrastructure analysis. So that would say, what would be the city's cost for stormwater contributions, roadway, infrastructure? Are we donating the land? And so what is that actual cost to the city of Virginia Beach? And then lastly, city council may choose to provide us with some alternative direction. And so we look forward to your discussion, questions, and direction on how to move forward.
Okay, anybody? Chris?
Thanks, Mayor Dyer. I mean, I know this is, most of this will probably take place-
In the new year, but we have received recently where people approach us with proposals to develop, but we don't understand the infrastructure analysis, and that kind of leaves a hole. From your standpoint, would it be wise, regardless of if there was support to do Capstone or anything there, to have that understanding, given the overcalls and overruns at Atlantic Park and some of the other overruns we've seen as related to infrastructure?
So I would say from the staff perspective, that having an infrastructure analysis, so we could fully speak to you about what the total public investment would be, would be in our best interest. That certainly would allow us to fully brief you all on if this, then that. So if you chose to move forward, you know, the scope of that would change based on the interest of council. So if you were to say to us, do an infrastructure analysis on all of those components, that would be one scope. If you were to say, pursue the infrastructure analysis on just the hotel and parking, then that would be a smaller scope. But having that data to fully brief you and allow you all to understand what the true public investment would be, would be very valuable for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for these options and discussion around next steps. I agree, it would be really helpful to have some handle on what the infrastructure needs and projected costs might be. I think we probably ought to maybe alongside that, continue having a conversation around some of these choices around potential uses. And I, you know, I think, and this is just a suggestion, I'm throwing it out here, that considering there's zero development on this property at all, and it's, and it's just, it's nothing on it, it may be worth our while to consider whether a TIF and an SSD format would be helpful to underwrite some of the investment in public infrastructure and what that might look like and contribute to the situation because, you know, we might as well capture, you know, as a part of that anticipated growth to help pay for the public elements of whatever we end up doing down there.
Okay, work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, thank you, Ms. Jarrett, for the, leading us to the next steps. And so I repeat what I said in the earlier presentation, the Atlantic Park project, which is a lot of time, energy, and treasure, has been spent. And we're all aware that that opens in May of next year. We want that to be highly successful, which I anticipate it will be. So we've got to be mindful of that project as we proceed with this. And I want to go back, I don't know how many studies have been done about the need for a headquarters hotel to support the convention center. I'm willing to bet that a lot of people agree that we ought to maybe pursue that as, and I don't think that that will compete with Atlantic Park. Will hopefully just support the convention center and be some summertime hotel rooms to boot. But, so I would say the hotel, I would recommend we consider that. Parking, of course, I hear about almost every day, parking at the convention center, the sports center, and at the oceanfront. We need some parking analysis and options. As for retail and apartments, I just spoke about, I think residential living will be or could be taken. The private sector can provide that around this area, as per that land use study. So I, and this is a lot of information today that we've seen. I'm frankly, really thrilled about this. I mean, it's going to be way beyond my two years left on my term here, but I think we just need to be mindful that we take cautious steps, but I do, I would like to see us proceed in some form or fashion.
Great, okay, anybody else? You know, let me just say, I think these were very insightful presentations today. And it just gives us a potential of what is out there, the potential of possibilities. And as I was saying, when I first met Mr. Jenkins back in 2018, you know, we had basically two goals, to make sure that Virginia Beach would be considered a true destination, a tier-one destination that people would come to. But the also, the importance of making the oceanfront year-round would be a boon to the economy for so many people. And the sports center has helped out tremendously. But can you imagine if we don't have a shoulder or a winter season, you know, going forward? That, once again, is a destination for every district, for people to come and have parking and, you know, the things that we need. And dealing with, especially, you know, Mr. Jenkins was very cognizant. I believe that the hotel would be 360 rooms. And he was talking about not having a 900-room hotel that would compete with other hotels. He's very sensitive, you know, to what, you know, people might do to the industry out there. And the other thing, and too, speaking to him last week, you know, we would be doing things in phases, and each phase would be judged on its own accord going forward. And once again, the priority, as Wes said about the convention hotel and parking, those are our immediate needs. But once again, you know, I just think about, you know, the potential, and when they're talking about the potential revenues that can come in as a result of this. And, you know, and the other component that, you know, that we can't, I don't want to miss, that in my many discussions with Mr. Jenkins, he talked about the need for affordable housing, to make sure that minority participation was part of not only the construction, but the people that he would be hiring there. And, you know, but once again, you know, what we're, you know, I'm going to use my analog metaphor again. We have a lump of clay here today, and it's up to us to develop it. And it's right, this is going to be a timely process going on. Nothing that we're going to rush into. And, you know, let me just, you know, just say that, you know, once again, most of these decisions or discussions are going to happen after we open Atlantic Park. And yes, Atlantic Park was in fact an eight-year odyssey. We got it to go, going, it was, and they had a very ambitious plan when they came, and we whittled it down. But once again, you know, between COVID, between inflation, but there, be assured that there were over 65 public engagements that we had. And if we still use the same for this, and, you know, with the public engagements, you know, I'm confident we can get this right. Thank you all very much, thank you.
Amelia?
I have one thing to ask, if you put that last slide up- Yes? Yes. Not that one. Right there, go back. The four bullets that you have there relating it to Atlantic Park, do they have anything, or what are the parts that they impact on these four, would you say? Any?
So with the Atlantic Park project as designed, it does have a multifamily component, it does have a retail component, and it does have parking. I would say that the parking needs across the oceanfront are significant, and we definitely need parking in the area adjacent to the Atlantic Park project. However, we do have a parking issue today at the convention center and the sports center. So we do know that parking across the entire oceanfront is a critical need for us.
Okay, so with that, it still addresses three out of the four, is what you're imagining?
I would say that the Atlantic Park project does include retail, and it does include apartments. I would consider the parking to be necessary at both locations. There is parking needed, certainly to support the Atlantic Park project in that area, but there is also a parking need today at the convention center and sports center, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I kind of concur with Councilwoman Remick that the top two, more than anything on this, there's a need at hotel and parking, if we had to narrow it down.
Mr. Mayor, that's, just to recap, I was trying to get a sense of, in what general direction does staff want, does council want staff to move in it? Because I'm not, I'm not getting any next steps. The next steps could be for staff to do nothing, and that's perfectly fine as well. But I'm trying to get a sense, does council want us to bring back any of these things to you all for future consideration on possible next steps for those?
Would it be, I really think that the total infrastructure thing, so we get the total, I agree with Chris said, we have to know what the total, the big picture is for everything. And out of that, we can draw out the components for the hotel and parking. But the sense I'm getting, though, that if we have to, and then, but the other thing is, they're going to have the public engagements, you know, to wait until we get that for the whole thing, and I think that would be important. But I think that we have, if we can agree on a concept, that maybe at least the preliminary investigations of the hotel and parking.
Mr. Mayor, so I think, and I apologize again for the previous presentation, they're going to do a community engagement round, then they're going to come back to you all with a final presentation on that master.
Yep.
They'll be here, I think they learned their lesson, they'll be here to present that to you all. And at that time, we could always bring this back up for consideration again. Because the thing that we're going to need, Mayor, to do that infrastructure study, is what elements you want us to focus on. Because if council only wants us to focus on the hotel and parking, that's a totally, totally different infrastructure study than it would be to do hotel, parking, retail, and apartments. You know, so that's what we'll take back as next steps. We'll complete the master plan of community engagement, come back to you all and brief you all on the final master plan. And then we'll bring back these elements as well for a discussion point for you all to let us know how you want us to handle that.
Okay, and then we can Barbara and then Chris.
After hearing all this today, I'm at no point in it to tell you what your next step should be. Some feedback from the public, so please don't get out there doing too much until we've got a week or two to get some feedback. I mean, if there's going to be feedback sessions from, on the 23rd, we need to hear from the public before we take any steps going forward. So if we wait a week or two to get some feedback from the public before we decide what you should do, I appreciate it. I'm just not ready to say at this point.
Councilmember Henry, that's literally, that's what the council's telling me. So they're telling me right now is, continue the community engagement on the master plan, and then that master plan is going to come back to you all for consideration sometime in the first quarter of the next calendar year. And then after that, council will take that back up as well as this, and give us any guidance that council wants us to do at that point.
And that would be, thank you. Chris?
Thank you, I'll be brief, as we get on to the Capstone deal.
Patrick, can you just confirm for the public, because we've done a lot of comparing, how many affordable housing units, which has been our big priority as we saw in the first presentation, how many affordable units are at Atlantic Park?
I don't think there is any, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, you're okay, Patrick?
Yeah, so I'll just recap one more time. So next steps for staff is, the consultant will continue with the community engagement for the master plan that they just briefed you on. They're going to bring that back to you all for a presentation sometime in the next first quarter of the calendar year. And then after that, council will talk about that master plan and also give us any guidance it wants to on what we presented to you all here to garner any next steps on a hotel, parking, retail apartments, or infrastructure studies. And then we'll get some guidance from you all at that point, and we'll know how to proceed.
And if by that point, Atlantic Park will be a state company. You got it, good, thank you. And finally.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, the last presentation will be a continuation of our CIP retreat pre-briefing. It'll be on the Economic and Tourism Development CIP portfolio, and that'll be provided to you by Emily Archer.
All right, good afternoon again. Last one.
Hello.
Mayor, members of the council. So this is our Economic and Tourism section of our capital improvement program. We've received a few of these, it gave me the, you're going to see the tables a lot coming up. So again, I will take your cues, how fast you'd like me to go. I know it's your last one today, though. So RIS section of the CIP, it includes 34 projects totaling 532.6 million. So RIS section of the CIP, it includes 34 projects totaling 532.6 million, including appropriations to date. We do have a minority of general fund funded projects at 35%. And the majority are actually tourism investment program funded projects at 44%. Our general fund projects, you'll notice a lot of them are already under construction, including our Vibe District, which is the 18th Street Improvement, which will be finished up here at the beginning of 2025. Innovation Park and Corporate Landing both have active construction on them. You'll notice balance is to complete. So if any future funding for infrastructure in those parks were to continue, that's what we need for additional utilities, roadways, infrastructure, stormwater ponds. But there's both active construction with the money we currently have appropriated. Dam Neck London Bridge Connector improvements is the Amazon New Roadway and Stormwater Ponds associated with that project. 31st Street Canopy is wrapping up as well. That should actually be done here in the next couple of weeks. APZ1 is a lot of the ongoing programs you'll see here for economic development purposes and BRAC, or to, excuse me, conform uses around Oceana in the, in the airways. We have one project that's for sale, or funded, for sale, it's supposed to be funded by the sale of projects. This is a single target, a single above target request this year in order to have more of a dedicated fund to contribute to acquisition opportunities as they arise to achieve growth and redevelopment goals in the city. Our tourism investment programs, you'll notice all the Atlantic Park projects are here under construction. There are two projects that were formerly general funded projects that are now being included in the Tourism Investment Fund, Oceanfront Capital Reinvestment and Amphitheater Capital Maintenance. Additional TIP funded projects, again, two more that were in general funding in previous years that are now being transferred to TIP fund. Atlantic Park off-site improvements, they have partial general fund, funding as well as Winston-Salem Avenue, which is now under construction. And majority of these are at the oceanfront or in sports tour, except for sports tourism, tourism infrastructure in District Two, as that's the PAC updates that are underway. And then several with partial federal and state funding, Oceana IT Conformity, 17th Street, Richard Stormwater and Cape Henry Lighthouse. The regional stormwater is partially TIP funded and received a 10 million state grant last year. Town Center SSD funded projects, we have two of those, Town Center Garage Plaza Capital Maintenance and Town Center Reinvestment. One parking endifies funded project for oceanfront parking facility capital maintenance. So as you've been seeing in these presentations, we have, we've grouped locally funded projects with flexibility, meaning they're under design, ongoing programming, and categories them here for you. I will have, I have individual slides each for these coming up as well. So the first is 17th Street Improvements Phase One. This is from Cypress Avenue to Pacific Avenue to rehabilitate that street with wider sidewalks, street trees, bicycle lanes, undergrounding over utilities. We are in the final stages of design of that. It was fully funded last year in our budget. So we are on track for a winter 2025 construction bid and October 2025 construction start. This is council districts five and six and TIP funded. Phase two of 17th Street is from Cypress Avenue to Birdneck Road. Again, a rehabilitation of that street. We completed preliminary engineering in 2021. Since that time, it's, we came up with a full cost estimate. There is a big balance to complete. It's kind of been on hold since then. The regional stormwater facility on 17th Street includes the design and construction of a regional stormwater pond to help facilitate, address flooding of the streets in this area as well as the redevelopment properties along 17th Street. We're at 30% design, actively working towards 60% with construction anticipated in 2027. This is the one with TIP and state funding on it. Atlantic Avenue Street Improvements, this project's to rehabilitate Atlantic Avenue from 5th to 40th Street with wider sidewalks, updated street furnishings, lane and curb adjustments, dedicated bike lanes, improved plantings and street trees. This is a, one of the first in the city to be delivered with a progressive design bill contract in place. So the contractor's already on board at the design phase, more of a partnership. And we typically do construct, bid, build. It's at the 30% design level and we are hoping to start the first phase of construction next October. It'll be delivered in phases in the off-season. And we are planning a public open house in January of 2025 for this. Some of our ongoing programming, APZ1 Economic Incentives. This provides incentives to convert or relocate non-conforming businesses located in APZ1 areas to other areas of the city, or if, get compatible businesses within APZ1 areas of the city. Since the program's inception, you can see we've funded about 3.2 million out of this fund to 43 businesses estimated to generate over 65 million in new retained private investment. Burton Station, this is the extension of Tolliver Road over the railroad tracks to Arrow Avenue. They're at the 90% design level and on target for construction in 2026. There is a balance to complete on that project. Our Economic Development Investment Partnership Program, the EDIP. This is our main discretionary, performance-based, local incentive offered to attract and retain businesses in the city of Virginia Beach. These are typically administered by the Virginia Beach Development Authority. It is funded from a dedication of the city's cigarette tax. London Bridge Commerce Center Infrastructure provides a new roadway to access this industrial park. It was sold in May 2023 and is currently being used for storage and staging in support of the offshore wind energy development. Lynn Haven Park work corridor improvements. This is to provide aesthetic and safety connections with sidewalks on both sides of Lynn Haven from Potter's Road to south of the mall. The design is complete. It was bid once and is about, no qualified bidders were chosen. And with some additional utility investigation, we're ready to bid it again in January of 2025 and hopefully to start construction by the end of 2025. Oceanfront Restrooms, so we have used this fund to construct new showers at Second Street and a new restroom on 20th Street. You can see on the screen. We are currently investigating designs for one at Sixth Street Connector Park and could achieve construction early as winter 25, 26 on this. Resort Parking District, no need for, there's no lack of need for parking at the oceanfront, as you're aware. This fund is designed to provide public parking spaces, the oceanfront in public garages or in private garages through cross-participation. You have been briefed in the past on an opportunity at 31st Street. We hope to bring that forward sometime in the next fiscal year for 200 spaces and a new garage at 31st Street. The map, I'd just like to point out is, you know, we look at a five-minute walking distance from every existing garage at the oceanfront in blue. Yellow ones are planned and where there's a gap, we identify in red. So that's where we, the staff, look at where we should prioritize parking needs and structure parking. Our Strategic Development Project, CIP, provides planning, design, construction, acquisition to support and implement our eight strategic growth areas as well as general strategic development initiatives for the city. You can see some of the work this funds, like our comprehensive plan update. This is where we place the funding for the African-American Historic Community Signs that are currently being unveiled and underway. This is where we used to move the temporary fabric canopy from 31st Street to Vibe Park and forthcoming shore drive study once the comprehensive plan is complete. And I believe this is the last one for Visitor Information Services. This is $1 million to modernize and support visitor services, including the Visitor Service Center, Information Center itself, coming up with more mobile applications and targeted communications, as well as replacing the sign at the interstate. One, I was, I was wrong. So our currently unfunded projects, again, I mentioned 17th Street Phase Two is on hold, the balance to complete, as well as the strategic site acquisition disposition is currently, has no balance remaining. So we are requesting additional funding annually to help shore that up and be ready when opportunities arise. Thank you.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Arthur, for the presentation, just for clarity for the public.
For colleagues, for the London Bridge Commerce Park, that agreement to fund that was a part of the sale of the land. It's not happening after, correct? That's, I believe that's the way that is.
Correct. Cost participations agreement would need to be finalized and executed for that, for those funds.
But that agreement to pay for that was a part of the sale or price. In other words, it's not happening, happening after the sale happened, sale of the land.
Correct. So.
It's an access road?
It's an access road off of Potter's to access it. If this was an industrial park, it'd need a lot of truck, trailer truck traffic. And the current intersection, as you come off interstate, is not adequate for the turning needs and that access to it. So this is to help develop that new roadway when that project comes to fruition.
Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. I have a question about the Visitor Center. I can't remember the amount that you said was meant to be invested there.
It's 1 million.
1 million. With the changes in technology and the way that visitors, you know, engage with information while they're making decisions about where to visit and what to do. I'm just curious, and you don't have to get into the specifics today, or Nancy, I see Nancy coming up. I'm just curious how much thought, if hopefully quite a bit, has been placed into, you know, an analysis of, of what the future use of this facility might be and, and whether or not we're meeting the, the needs of today's visitors with the space and, and technology.
So Nancy will give a, a probably a better overview and we'll, we'll, we'll share some information that we previously communicated, but the, the time was a while ago as well. So we literally, we did what you suggested, Mr. Valucci, because I think that was previous discussion from council when they actually authorized. The scope was to look at Visitor Information Services, look at the Visitor Information Center, and then, and think about it with how folks are actually consuming technology and information now. So that was some of the work that the staff did. And they previously worked with stakeholders and they got a pretty interesting proposal that we're moving forward with. And Nancy, I think you want to give council a quick overview of what that looks like for me.
Yeah, so you're absolutely right, Councilman. And with today's modern traveler and our job of talking to them before they come to Virginia Beach, while they're in market, and then when they go home and reminding them to come back again, we need to sort of change the way we're doing business. And so what we're proposing in this, with this CIP, is the removal of the 24th Street kiosk, which is a walk-up kiosk at 24th Street, which you received, which you received a council staff briefing on, and replacing that with mobile Visitor Information Centers. So bringing information to people where they are. So if we have a festival at the oceanfront, we have a festival at Mount Trashmore. If we have a festival in Kempsville, being able to service guests where they are and bring information to them. This will also help us with the sense of arrival coming off of Interstate 264, getting to the oceanfront. We had a sign that was in desperate need of replacement and with updated branding and sort of more of a "you are here" look. And so that's, those are the two things that we're gonna tackle first as part of the initial investment. But you're absolutely right, it's time to invest in how we're talking to visitors. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, it's time to modernize it. I mean, you know, I just, I don't have the statistical information about this particular visitor center, so I want to just withhold making any sweeping generalizations. But I know that more and more and more people don't go to visitor centers and they don't pick up the little pamphlets. And I don't, I know that's not exactly what happens there, but.
Yeah, and I think.
I don't think you're on top of it, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, and Mr. Valucci, that's council specifically asked us to look at this as part of our master plan as well. So although it wasn't the best presentation, it'd be better the next time. They did look at that and had some reimagined ideas of what that can look like as well. Because you're spot on, the world doesn't consume information like that and it's, it's not very well trafficked.
I didn't think it was.
Yeah, so the first investment doesn't address the bricks and mortar. That will come later. So thank you very much.
If, if we need bricks and mortar for that use.
We need to address that.
Amelia, did you have something?
Yes, not to you.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. With what you have up here, I have two comments and one question. If you go back to, I think, Slide Four, Justin, you went so quickly. I missed what you said about District Four in that one. Yeah, you said something about, yeah. And you explained right there, improvements.
Sure. So Burton Stations for the extension. So there was a first phase that constructed the improvements on Burton Station Road and the beginning of Tolliver Road, the remaining funding here. Phase Three is to extend Tolliver Road over the railroad tracks and connect it to Arrow Avenue and improve up to Thurston Avenue, not just the roadway, but utilities. There's a stormwater pond and the design of a new pump station as well that would be needed for any kind of new infrastructure in this area.
And timeline on there?
So they're at 90% design. We could be, achieve construction as soon as 2026. With inflation and ongoing, the length that this project's been around, we are seeing a growing balance to complete on it. So increased costs across the board as we've been seeing across our CIP.
Okay, and the second, what's to do with, one, as a comment, to thank you all for including and expanding that African-American community signs. As you know, we've already put two. And those four that we have in, from that 150,000, has been a positive buzz because it's looking at District One, District Seven, District Nine and District Four. And they're really excited that you have put in extra money to go across for those 14 neighborhoods. And for the public to understand, those who are in need will be the first ones addressed, that they do not have signs. And then, of course, those that need improvements and so forth will follow. And we look at it as almost like a three-year, if I'm correct on our, it's not gonna happen right tomorrow. We've got this and then we'll work. But at least we have a nice plan, we have a design that can help things move quicker.
Thank you. It's been a honor to work on it.
Yeah, and then the last thing was a question. As you know, I'm the liaison for HRT. And they are concerned for the Atlantic, Atlantic Street along that area with the trolley. Saying, you know, we have that trolley accessible. And they are concerned that with the redesign, the hard people getting on the trolley and the trolley is very popular. Can you elaborate more about what's gonna happen in that, as I'm being asked?
Sure. So the Atlantic Avenue project we have is implementing, implementing the ramp, the resort area mobility plan that came out in 2023, which called for the removal of the trolley names, trolley lanes for bike lanes and integrating the trolley with regular travel lanes as well. We tested that as a pilot project as well at that time. We are happy to provide further information in a future council packet of full kind of reason why, how we got to the point that we're at with the Atlantic Avenue design and typical section.
Yeah, because HRT are concerned about the trolley and people just trying to get off because it's slower. And having that special lane was great for people on and off. But if you have something, then we can share back with them because there is a concern of, you know, change in that lane.
Definitely.
Dr. Ross Hammond, staff will meet to discuss and communicate with them. But as Emily indicated, council did adopt the resort area mobility plan and it called for a reimagined way, a reimagined way that transportation will happen along that corridor. So it's likely that as we phase into that project, there's gonna need to be some shifting and modification of our contract with HRT. We don't need to do that right now, but we will communicate to them what that looks like based on what council adopted.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the last little bit of conversation covered most of what I was curious about, namely the, just, just the progress of what it'll end up looking like with Atlantic Avenue Street Improvements and pedestrian improvements and whether it's implementing ramp, it's taking into consideration, reimagined Atlantic Avenue, those suggestions and try to make it more of a pedestrian-friendly, less car congested environment, is that. And I know there was some discussion from local stakeholders about availability of parking and, you know, things like that. And I think those, we just, you know, confirm head-on, just so we know what we're doing.
Correct. There will be a briefing, I believe, about parking in January for the body as well.
And then, so another point that you made, Councilmember Schumman, there's going to be a community meeting, I think, Emily, in December?
January now.
January, with the stakeholders on the Atlantic Avenue project, right?
Correct, yes.
Anybody else? Hey, I think we've done it. Thank you all very much. We are returned.
Before we adjourn, please remember, some of you council members to come out, the last two African-American community signs. We'll have Councilman Hutcherson, and we'll have Councilwoman Wooden as well, but please come out. The community would love to see you all.